...the pledge and uh... Bedford, if he would do the dedication, please.
I'm glad to be here.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll bow your ass, please. Heavenly Father, please bless us as we come together tonight. God, may our decisions benefit not only Mount Pleasant, but all of us in this community. Uh, please protect us during this uncertain time. Keep us all safe and healthy. In your son's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you all very much. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Mr. Craig, there. Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Lightman Schiff?
Here.
And Mr. Spade?
Here.
And then you got Mr. David here.
Oh, Mr. Spade.
Right in front of you. I'm not aware of it. She's right in front of me.
Spade's not in his right place, don't think.
Maybe she's just not around here.
Next we have, because we're gonna try to move right on through this. I'm glad we don't have a big crowd, but... Free. Yeah, of course. Uh, approval or correction of minutes from our study session of March 12th and our regular meeting of March 17th. Once you've had a chance to review those, that entertainment motion. On one or the other, or vote.
I'll make a motion to be accepted, the minutes as presented.
You want to do one or vote?
I'll do both.
Okay.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No awards, presentations, or appointments?
By design.
That's right. Completion of unfinished business and let this be known that this is a public hearing and the final reading of ordinance 2020-1049. It's an ordinance amending Title 15, Chapter 6 of the Minnesota Code of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, to establish no parking zones on designated streets.
So, Mayor and Commissioners, this is Edgewood and this is, um, North High. And we did get some feedback from Mr. Sims and a couple neighbors on North High that they had a real problem with us making it no parking on either side. And I think we've all come to an agreement, I actually spoke to Mr. Sims today, that, um, the parking, I can't remember how it's ordered in the ordinance, but on the odd address side will be allowed. It will not be allowed.
Not allowed.
In front of the homes, in front of Mr. Sims' homes, will be allowed.
Even number, even number.
It will be allowed.
Right.
On the even numbered side, and that's just...
But they got to keep everybody happy.
It's on the, the east side of North High Street is where there's no parking.
Okay. And just to clarify that, in case somebody thinks it's not quite, it's not clear cut east and west, but that is also, no, that is also the, um, odd numbered addresses where you will not be allowed to park. On North High.
And I only got one call, but I understand everybody probably got the same call I did, but...
And I, I did talk to him today and he was happy and I said, I actually offered to put it off for another month if he wanted to come in and he said he was good with the way we were purging it.
Good enough if he's fine and, uh, let there be anybody who would like to speak and we have no one in the audience, so we're not gonna have anybody to speak on it. Again, thank you for covering it, touching base with one individual.
Is the front door unlocked?
Yes.
Sure. We're not having a public hearing.
Yeah, I just came in the front door.
Okay, good, good. Thank you.
So, uh, with that being said, that entertainment motion for ordinance 2020-1049.
I'm like a motion, Mayor, for ordinance 2020-1049 for parking only on the even numbered house.
Okay.
And no parking on those streets.
Yeah, you got two other streets that are being covered on this, uh...
Edgewood.
Okay, no parking at all on Edgewood.
No, northwest side of Edgewood.
Northwest.
Yeah, yeah.
Only one side of the street.
If you did, yeah, you have to some parking on Edgewood because there is nowhere, they can't park otherwise.
Why don't we do it as just as presented? Can't we...
Yes, as presented.
As presented, I just want to clarify the odd side on High Street.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Monthly report from the Mayor, I don't have anything other than everybody, please be safe. Let's do what's right. Let's get this economy rolling somehow. Uh, monthly financial and budget report, Ms. Loretta.
Yeah. Loretta, just like, can you hear the microphone?
We don't have a podium for you, Loretta.
Oh, I think you've all got the copy, because he emailed to you of the, uh, monthly report. Uh, again, March concluded our, well, the, uh, property tax. We collected 95% of the budgeted amount, so that's, that's a pretty good, pretty good number. And, uh, honestly, at the end of February, I was a little concerned, but the first week of March, the first, actually, the first three days of March, we collected 152,000. Um, most of that was because of the way the, the month landed. It landed on a, on Sunday, so people mailed them on the Friday or Saturday, but we didn't receive them actually to the office until the following week. So, we figure that's why. There was so much, so many collections back to back. And those we did consider current. We did not, we did not get that penalty on those. We did not start putting penalties on them until, um, I think that Friday or maybe even the following Monday.
The 29th of February was on a Saturday.
Yeah. So, we gave people ample time for them to get, as long as they got them in the mail, we gave them ample time for, to be delivered before we did that.
Or other things, if they posted, you know, if they mailed them out, just posted in, I guess, before the, the deadline.
We're not charging any late fees and we're not cutting any of the off, right now.
But normally, no. Normally, no, it, it has to be in, and it's on the bill, that it has to be in the office. Um, because otherwise, we would be, it would be a mess. But property taxes are a one thing, it's one time a year and specifically with it falling the way it did this year, I just give them that, which is good today to make sure that we got them in. And then, and the fact that there were so many, um, they just didn't have time to get them posted and get the penalties put on anyway.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
So, and that's pretty much, um...
What about our, I guess, our gas bills and all of that right now?
Well, what we're...
Several people?
We are, what we really won't know until, see, the way this thing failed is our due date was already passed before we went into this, um, to the...
They announced the school closures on the 16th, the bills were due that day.
The bills were due that, yeah, and so they...
We're following, we're both doing the same thing, yeah.
They were already, um, past due, yeah, by the time it was declared. We did not get cut off, um, but we did not make that, you know, we just, we, we didn't make that determination toward the end till we could see. And we really didn't have, for the month of March, we really didn't have a whole lot that weren't. Our concern right now, to be honest, is some of it, because the bills are still due. Even though we're not charging the recent disconnect fees and we're not charging the penalties, the actual bill is still due and we still have to pay the gas bill. We signed that bill today.
I'll, I'll say this, Kate and I are keeping our eyes on this, yes. And I'll, I'll tell you our concern, now just to be real frank with you, is we're gonna have some people that are gonna start busting through these deposits they got.
Mm-hmm.
And we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to sit down and make a decision. All right. Let's hope that this is not prolonged and this becomes a big issue. But, all right, they start busting through that deposit, we've got some hard decisions to make. I'm not gonna recommend we cut anybody off, period. Not under these circumstances. But we, but we got, we need to keep that in the back of our mind, all right? When they blow through that, what are we going to do? Number one. Number two, uh, I read where a number of communities are going to say, okay, because here's reality, a number of these people that aren't making their, paying their utilities today are in a financial situation where they can't come back in 90 days and pay it off. That's reality. All right. A number of communities, and what I've seen, a lot of them do, are saying, okay, we're gonna, your next month's bill comes as it's supposed to and you're gonna have one 12. Of what you owe us, no interest, no penalties, no nothing. And give them 12 months to pay it and 12 if they only pay it. That way, even what you might see as some of the lower income people that maybe have a little harder time making that bill anyway, that way you're, you're giving them some time to be able to offset. Because, I mean, come on now, there's no way that some of these people are gonna be able to walk in here and pay $500.
And there are some people that are making more money, so it just...
I understand that.
But the power system is going with six months, so you know, talk with Val.
Yeah.
And, um, but I have the same concern that you've mentioned that, and we have, um, a fiduciary obligation to run this utility and we can't get it behind.
Right.
Uh, we still have bills to pay and we provided the service, so...
But the longer people stay out and...
Well, they...
The longer it's been away, we have to, you know, the mayor...
What happens is they, they move and they leave us with the bill.
And some of them do that.
So, that's where you gotta keep your eye on that, huh?
And that some of them that are making more money right now aren't gonna be doing it for very long because that, that unemployment money's not gonna last very long, but they're doing it, you know...
Unless you might hope that it hasn't gotten unemployment fixed yet.
Some, yeah. They're starting to, a good note is, Jackie, that my employees who filed have, had not started getting it, some of them started, not all of them, some of them started getting it this, this week. So, they've released some more of catching up.
I mean, we're not starting.
You know, but catching up, catching up.
Yeah, we're...
And catching up. But my concern is, is that, ours is gas, so fortunately, the weather's getting warmer, so that's not so much the heating thing and that. Is there a way that we can let people know that before they get into this bind? So, they're gonna anticipate that, that they can get on putting their, their bill on a 12, you know?
I've had one person, oh, come to me and, and, oh, come to us and say, "Oh, okay, I've lost my job." And this came to me on the first day of April or second day. She just got her bill for this month. It wasn't even due yet and she had paid her last month and she come to me and said, "Um, I've just lost my job. I'm a fourth year at home. I know I'm not gonna be able to make it this month." Um, what I did for her was give her the application to family and the family and pointed her in the directions of some of the, uh, South Central. But we did learn that South Central, 2020, that they take the water, but not food.
Mm-hmm. And that's something brand new.
Yeah. They don't pay for the sewers anymore. So, that kind of adds to that burden that, that these people that are already, that just lost their jobs are gonna have, um, have a pity.
Well, here's the thing, is, let's not over discuss this as much because it's not here yet.
Yeah, and we're on top of it and we'll get the message out.
Free, free regular because it's gonna get real. Just matter when. And we gotta make sure we treat everybody equal, against any different treatment. And, uh, but just, I just wanted to make y'all aware of what we're thinking, where we're going with some of it, because it's real.
And the best we can do as far as getting the message outdoors, um, the, the power system has the luxury that they have an envelope and they have, they can put paper in there with messages and, and we can't. And we can, we've got like 25 characters that we can put on there. So, you can't put much on there. But it'll be, it'll be social media, it'll be texting, businesses site, you know, that kind of stuff as best as we can. Um, you know, we didn't say anything last month, so people didn't know if they were gonna get cut off or not. Now, our concern is that they know they're not getting cut off and that they won't pay this month as a result. We still want to get too far, we can't get upside down, we literally can't. I mean, we, we get so low for us to get upside down. So, we'll check...
All right. Thank you, Loretta. Monthly report from the City Manager.
Uh, we need that one voted on for it.
Okay. Have a motion?
I make a motion that we, uh, approve.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Yes.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Monthly report from the City Manager.
Uh, yes, Norm, I start this off by saying that the State of the City is gonna be available the first of the month. We're not doing a State of the City for May because we don't have too much to report. But obviously, April is available, we just don't have many people in City Hall, so, uh, I did, uh, about 120 via email. Um, we, people have asked, what are we gonna do now that supposedly the stay at home is not gonna be enforced after the 30th? And the answer to that question is, I don't know. We're waiting to see if they're doing it in phases, how they're going to do it. Um, don't, can't answer that question yet. We'll, we'll cooperate with whatever the state is recommending and go back to eight hours a day if we need to or, or continue as we are. But we will keep posted on that as we decide.
But just letting you know, you know, I guess, we appreciate, I guess, you know, them having a look different hours.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Uh, this...
I can't imagine.
The State of the City, their floor.
We already discussed about the utilities, but, uh, just to let you know, because I did ask the chief on Andre Baker tomorrow, they're leaving Chambers Funeral Home tomorrow at 12:20. They're traveling down Third Avenue to Tiger Trail, going by Bolt Softball Field and then they'll hit Highway 43. And they're, people are, are planning on lining up on ball fields and on that route to be waving at family, if anybody wants to participate in that.
What time?
Uh, they're, they're starting at Chambers Funeral Home at 12:20.
Anything else, Kate?
That is it, thank you.
All right. We don't need a motion on that.
Yeah.
Number 11, new business resolution 2020-8 of the State of the United...
We have the waste, we have 10 wastewater, will you, will you, um, report? And you all have this in your, uh, finders from Barnes, Farn, Farge. And, uh, Booniz is on the county, CDBG, we should have equipment out there the end of this month, first of May.
What's that buzzer?
I'm getting a phone call from a number I don't know and every time I stop it, it keeps coming back. I can usually turn my phone off.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just get a bird, I'm going for that.
It's her phone button on the table.
But it's not a number that I know or anything like that, I just turn it off. Pretty much, I do, I got told Chloe today, she got a number, I sent you some busy signal and she goes, "What is that?" What a busy signal, wow. Um, so that, that's the county, uh, CDBG is, is the one that's gonna move along quickest. It's a small project, half a million dollars, but we've already bid that contract out. The, um, uh, the Rainy Street is, uh, we changed some things. And of course, you did definitely be a, a pump system now. And you know, we changed, uh, the wastewater plant, we're looking at MBR, so they're redesigning those things. Um, we have the biggest part of the project designed and at USDA now and that will probably sit and sit and sit, that'll be the longest waiting period for them to approve it. Then, once they do approve it, um, it will be let out for bid. The biggest portion of, of the rehab. So, you've got that in your packet for an update on sewer. And, um, there really isn't a, a, a gas system update, Mayor.
Oh, it works, directed, looking at real good.
So far, so good, yes, mm-hmm.
Everybody I've run into around town has been most pleased.
Lot of learning curve and about helping out a lot?
Uh, and again, what Kate, I want to reiterate, Meg, we don't have dirt moving folks. And I've told Kate, the minute that piece of equipment hits the ground, I won't take a tree.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, been doing it since '82, Jesus Christ. Come on.
Progress is slow, Bill.
Well, it's never be that slow. All right. So, let's take care of that number 11, new business, uh, resolution 2020-8. And again, they gave each of you a, uh, one page thing here that I asked you to do the bullet points on the, uh, resolution of internal control policy. I read through it, uh...
And everything I have in front of you too, that is, um...
Uh...
The bullet point, point should be there.
Which we're gonna touch here in just a second, page nine.
These are a lot of sense.
Did they do most of its wording?
Yeah.
Adjustments to customer accounts are properly authorized. What, who is department authorization? This is my only question.
What that means is that, uh, more than one, up until now, we've only had pretty much one person that's been doing all the adjustments. And so, what this does is bring in a second person to, to make sure that, uh, one of, one of the, uh, they'll be initiated at the public work and then they'll actually be entered, um, here in this office. So, you've got more than one person looking at those adjustments. And then at the end, uh, at the end of the month, when I do, um, my month end, there's a report that are printed out that has all the adjustments, um, and that will be forwarded to the City Manager for her approval.
But we got that this month. And then typically, if there's adjustments, when we can, we try and do it via email through the paper trail. Somebody had a leak, they've proven that they've had a plumber come out.
I just think you better be cautious with that, is my only thing. Having been in the audit business, what I do, what I do for a living for all these years, uh, I, I'm not telling you what to do, you might want to consider having, who that's gonna be because somebody...
Well, you said in there, that...
It just said, uh, it says, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but it says...
But you gotta read through it.
Adjustments to customer accounts are properly authorized.
Okay, the way that...
Get authorized.
Okay, the way that...
So, they go to the next page.
The way they, uh, the way we had to do those internal controls, if you have a policy here, this is what it's designed to, uh, to...
I know, and I'm, I'm in your procedures now, just hold up, please. All right. Current penalty adjustments can only be made by the accountant or customer service supervisor. All I'm saying is, you better not come in here and find one that's approved by somebody other than that because your, your, your policy says that it's got to be one of those two people.
And that's why we want it in writing, because that's the practice.
Okay.
But that's what she just said, you know, that...
No, no, she mentioned three people, this is saved two, by the accountant or the customer service supervisor.
And when you have a third person, it's basically, Loretta and I both know this is going on. It's not them, it's just...
I understand, but when you approve...
Oh, whose initials are on it finally, is that what you're saying?
Who actually can go into the computer system and make that change? Is the accountant or the customer service supervisor?
Okay. All I'm saying is, you better make sure that's who it is because you done worked yourself in a box.
No one else can actually access it to do it.
Okay.
That's Ashley.
So, you're talking about Ashley and Debbie Jo. Or, uh, Ashley and Kelly.
Kelly and Ashley.
Kelly, I'm sorry, yeah.
But Debbie Jo being the one initiating it after, uh...
So, Debbie Jo initiated, and you were, Kelly or, uh, Ashley, we want to prove it.
In the system or by Ashley and Kelly.
Okay.
But yes, we understand the importance, though, that if you set up this as your policy, you gotta follow it.
14, number 20, accounts...
Did we adopt that?
Not yet.
Okay. We had a...
We need four questions.
Less, less other questions, we need to adopt that. Or were you going over specific things, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were moving on.
Page 14, number 20, at least 180 day old accounts are to be written off by the accountant following the collection policy of the City of Mount Pleasant. Uh, I, I think you better be cautious with that one because the current times we find ourselves in. Because you may wind up with some people over 180 days past due.
We will, no doubt.
Just, just say it. And page 22... Number 3, who is the grant coordinator?
Kelly.
So, I got, and I tore apart pretty good. Been doing it too long.
Remember when you were talking about the, uh, the going over the 120 days?
Eighty, 180.
180. Maybe we, we should, uh, uh, put a caveat in there or...
I, I think that it is, I think before we make any decisions about that, this is just me personally. We need to see what, we need to see how large this is gonna be because we, we may need to extend that out for more days. Or we may need to put a little asterisk in there that says, I don't think we have that verbiage right now because we don't know the numbers.
Yeah. Well, that's why I was thinking, maybe if we put, uh, 180 days to be written off, um...
But we're not gonna write them off.
Okay, or, uh...
Keep in mind, though...
We're, we're not gonna write them off.
Keep in mind, too, we bring you a list of accounts to be written off a couple times a year.
I get that.
The fact that they're written off does not mean we're still not collecting them.
I understand that. But we're not gonna write these accounts off for 180 days.
Uh, comment, that we've talked about with water and sewer, I think, you know, we have a collection policy, so when the fees and stuff are, are added on. And this time, y'all waved on, so we didn't change the ordinance. Like, ordinance is exactly, exactly the same. I think if it gets down a month or so from now, where you wanna start officially extending things, we can do resolutions and ordinance that temporarily extend all of these.
That's, that's, that's what, that's what I'm saying, right. The timing is not nice.
Yeah. But I think you, you can do that officially instead of just...
The timing is probably like you say, Corey, in 60 days from now.
Yeah.
Until we really get a, a handle on how much of this, because they're gonna go over 180 days, but we're not gonna write them off, we can give them 12 months to repay it.
So, are you saying, Corey, not to change this now?
I'm saying we may need to just make a little asterisk of this one and so if y'all later on decide it's time to extend stuff officially, then we can include them all.
Or could we, could we not add or, you know, or line them in?
Not right now. Well, I, yeah, I wanna hold off for a couple of months.
But what I'm saying is... This is like different ter, different circumstances than normal.
That's right.
I know, but what I'm asking is what she's saying, do we go ahead and do this right now with this change to look at it later or do we omit that? That's what I'm asking.
No, we don't omit it. We just come back, like she's saying, if in 60 days from now, we're seeing that this is gonna get the numbers...
So, we leave it alone like it is?
Right.
Right.
That's what I'm asking, do we leave it alone?
Yes.
What you're asking is, can you put in there or at the discretion of the City Manager?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Or at the discretion of the board.
Yeah, you can do that or you can...
I'm sorry, but I'm not gonna go with that right now. I, I will, if we're gonna start deferring these payments and we have to keep these utilities afloat, I wanna make sure every Commissioner understands what we're doing when we're doing that. Because if we do something that does not allow that to stay fluid and level with money, if we violate the law... Does that make sense?
Yeah, because these are unusual circumstances. I understand exactly what you're saying. And maybe on normal circumstances, 180 days will be okay, but not going this time because they don't know what tomorrow holds.
No.
I know. So, are you saying just leave it like it is?
And adopt it like it is and then y'all come back and later on, say everything needs to be...
Well, we need to remember to come back.
Don't worry.
We won't forget that.
I'm highlighting...
Kate, I talk about it about every other day or so.
Well, I know, but I mean, we need to seriously to remember to come back because we've left it like that, we don't wanna...
Yeah, and we just have to, to get an idea of what, what the problem is. I mean, if we have all of our payers not paying for 180 days, we're gonna go turn the water off at the plant. We cannot survive it.
We cannot do that.
Yeah. So, we'll, we'll stay on top of it.
Yeah. That's all I'm saying, I...
But as is, the internal control as presented and un, not in these unprecedented times,
But as, as the internal controls as presented, and un, not in these unprecedented times, but in normal times, would be okay.
Right.
With the exception of there's a couple of things that there's some wording that might vacuum into a quarter.
So do we need a, a motion to accept this one?
We do, we do.
I'll make a motion to accept as presented, resolution twenty twenty dash eight, on internal control policy.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Discussion declaration of emergency, and I'll tell y'all where this came from, is, Kate, now we're discussing the fact that FEMA and FEMA money's gonna be available, and at that time, we thought you had to declare a state of emergency to get it, then we've seen varying different opinions over the last three days as to whether or not we should do it. So here's my opinion, here, the city of Mount Pleasant officially, as of this moment, is declaring a state of emergency.
For Mount Pleasant?
For Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, for a period of seven days. Okay.
Why just seven days?
Because we gotta file one.
Okay, well, that question, okay.
That's how long it lasts.
It's how long it lasted.
Okay.
Seven days on the day.
Yeah. So last week, they expressed that we should pass this, then Monday, the attorneys at the elementary school, they don't need to.
Yeah, well, that's what I was wondering why we were doing it for that, okay.
Or nothing changed.
Do you have it?
Yes.
And, and this does not require a commission vote?
No, that's what I'm just saying. That's the reason I'm just saying, the mayor, as of right now.
Has done this.
And that way, these legal mumbo jumbo's get into it, well, you did, you, you did, you had to do it, well, then we did it.
We did it.
So I'll sign that immediately afterwards, I think there's a copy of it here somewhere, Kate.
Probably in the, to be signed.
Okay. All right. Authorizing city attorney to file lawsuit May the sixth for delinquent taxes.
We actually authorized her last month, but that has been extended, so now we're authorizing her to do that May sixth.
Can I ask if the court extends the, if, if the court keeps it close, if.
stays closed.
If the Supreme Court keeps the deadline, you know, off the books, I guess, do you want to delay the filing of the tax lawsuit as long as possible, or do you want to go ahead and file it?
I think that we should go along with whatever they're, they're recommending with the court.
Okay.
So basically, you need a motion on that?
Yes.
So we need, the motion would be that, that she'll file a May sixth or as soon as she's able to, based on whatever the Supreme Court is willing to.
Supposedly wants to make that.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the attorney to file the lawsuit of May sixth or as.
In accordance with.
As in accordance with the court system.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
I.
Oppose? Motion carries. Select auditor for the nineteen twenty audit.
Um, if you'll remember, we bid this out last year, and we were relatively surprised at the cost, it was, it was just thirty-four thousand dollars, I think, and Mr. Velefante came back and offered to do it, I think it's right, seventy-five. For the next two years, it'll be the last year we'll use Velefante, and by our internal control policy, we can't go any longer than five years, so we will follow that, we'll bid it out this fall for the next fiscal year, but if it is, if, as long as you all are willing, we would recommend that you go ahead and select Velefante for this, um, the next audit.
By law, you can't, uh.
No. By our.
Our internal.
Our internal. Made it five years.
Five years and then.
Can't go beyond that unless we change our internal control policy again, which I don't want to mention.
So this will be his last, this is his last year.
Yes.
I agree.
So just need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, continue with Velefante as our auditors, auditors for the call in here.
Second, got a motion in a second, all those in favor? I, I oppose. Motion carries. General comments from citizens?
There's few under the chairs.
I don't see any, uh.
Or have.
Any, any comments quickly from the commissioners, and thank all of you for being here.
Before, before you vote, during our roll, Leadership Murray Class, just to set it out, our Leadership Murray Class is, uh, collecting donations of primarily food for the Food Bank, um, this is gonna be all over Murray County, but what's collected here in Mount Pleasant will stay and, and go to facework. We have a donation out, out in front of the city hall, and then, uh, we will, uh, collect here through Thursday, and then we'll be at the elementary school Friday, and then it'll be carried over to the.
Are you only doing perishable?
Yes, non-perishable.
Oh, I told Rock to call you.
I did, but he didn't say it. I asked him non-perishable, if it was, was it.
She had perishable.
I have perishable, but, yeah, if anybody knows.
But you might.
From the restaurant, if anybody knows of anyone who is in need of food, and it doesn't, it's perishable, we have, I have cheese and frozen things to that, that, I don't know.
I eat cheese.
Go ahead.
I'm serious, I, I, I done put my restaurant on that. I said, we ain't got no income, you cannot eat all day.
But, uh. Let me know how that works.
Eat one day a day, it's all day.
Yeah.
Well, we have several of those, including myself.
I've been hearing that.
It's called grazing. I have a question, um, and I don't know if this, but have we heard anything from either mayor that are taxing? Neither one has announced, or have they? I got a call about it, and I did not know what to say about.
Well, don't.
It'll be on the mayor's agenda, this sales tax that was just passed, but, um, it legally goes to the city and to the school, and, and if we wanted to not go to the city, we'll have to vote that we're giving that to the school, and for whatever period of time it doesn't make that work.
Columbia, did Columbia mayor announce that, what they were doing?
He did, yes.
Okay. That, I said I had not heard, that was what.
Well, I can tell you in a discussion, and I hope everybody goes along with this, because it'll have to come before this, right, Kate?
Mm-hmm.
Kate, I've had a discussion, I stuck my neck out and told everybody it was going to the schools, and that's what I intend for it to do in Mount Pleasant.
Well, I, I'm, I didn't say anything, they all said it would come before this, is what, what it was, because someone was.
It's not gonna be pretty.
Quite, no, and, and the, the Facebook.
It's not gonna be.
Thing was not pretty, and that's what I got it back.
I just like the Spring Hill, the Cape, Columbia, the Cape, and the next one, I don't know.
Let me tell you what it did, though, Kate, and I looked at it, and in the next year or so, we may have to make a different decision, after all this, this subsiding, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Because it's gonna get, I'm telling you, it's gonna get ugly, as this year, it wasn't gonna be, what, twenty, thirty.
Well, because it doesn't start until.
Because it's got such a late start before, so.
But I'm just talking about, you know, like Spring Hill, they don't even invest in.
Well, it was interesting conversation Kate had with Spring Hill, and I'm not gonna take the words out of her mouth, but they said they were gonna do it if we didn't, they were gonna pass it if the county didn't or do it, or not, because Williamson County was already doing it up there, and they said, we, if the county hadn't done it, Spring Hill was gonna do it anyway.